Welcome you to the March 26th Board Meeting. As you noticed, everybody, this is an unusual circumstances. So after we call the meeting to order, I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tom, do you have an announcement?
Just had a quick announcement. There was an accident on Lake Norwood earlier today. An individual was stepping into their kayak and it flipped over. First responders pulled the gentleman out of the water and transported him to the hospital. I tried to get an update about 30 minutes ago, and I don't have an update. But I just ask the community to keep this property owner in their prayers and the individual's family also.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We have two by phone, or one by, two by phone. Mary Sinkus is by phone and Tia Bidwell is by phone. Steve McKee is not there, and he has no proxy tonight. Jim Abrahamson is not here, but I have his proxy at this time. So we'll go on from here. The approval of minutes for February 27th, Board of Directors' regular meeting. I'd like a motion to approve those minutes. Jerry, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote on that, and we'll have to ask Tia and Mary specifically. So put those in favor of... Okay, Tia?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. March 12th, there was a XTC session for confidential personnel issues, as well as March 17th. And March 19th, the work session meeting was canceled due to the COVID-19. We have joint advisory committee reports. As you see, there's no one else in the room, and I think Tom has an update for each of those.
Yes, I received a update from each of the committee chairs. From the Lakes Committee, as the boating season ramps up, we asked Rick Egles to report to us how new boat, weight boat regulations and enforcement are going. The committee told residents we would monitor this through the season, and we're open to more changes if needed. Second item, second disc monitoring starts the first week of April. Third, there was a lengthy discussion about new members and guests-only restrictions and how this affects lakes. One member spoke about kayak fishing tournaments who had filmed TV shows encouraging people to fish here, and now that it is not possible. The R and R Rules and Regulations Committee and the Board need to clarify exactly what is meant by member and guest, and what outside events will be allowed going forward. Number four, Lakes JAC has three openings starting in June, and we have four applicants to interview. Number five, two subcommittees were formed. One to look at having a lake watch volunteers to assist rangers in identifying boating violations, and one to look at the growth in boat size and see if we need to place limits on boat size, type, and horsepower for the future. So that was the Lakes report. For the Recreation Committee, all amenities were reported in good shape. On March 7th, the meet and greet for new property owners, 52 attended from 17 states. They have two openings on the Recreation Committee for this coming changeover in terms. If you want, bring up the recommendation by the Committee on Guest Pass Use at the Gun Range. That's the last point. And for the Golf Committee, rounds and revenue are up. Year-to-date through February, rounds were up 927. Merchandise revenue was up by 4,100. Monday through Friday, primetime play is already 78% full with groups, April through October. This report was issued prior to the COVID-19 situation. Birkstale Bridge removal to begin in late March, early April. Burns McDonald is engineering firm working on obtaining required permits, developing removal plans, secure contractor bids, and assisting with project management. All the bids have already been acquired. Burns McDonald is working on obtaining bids, but they did send us an email stating that it could be delayed as a result of the virus situation. Scottsdale Bridge, construction drawings are near completion. Permits have been obtained. Expect work to be done mid-June. It is difficult to get contractors due to the small nature of the project. I'm also concerned about that project getting delayed as a result of the virus situation. With the increase of play on Brittany since the 2020 Plan took effect, we are encouraging golfers to pair up on Brittany to help ensure we have enough carts. This, once again, was prior to the COVID-19. Voted unanimously to extend, or recommend, the extension of the Handicap Flag Program, which will go before the Board tonight. And the Golf Committee will be going on their summer time, start time of 4:30 starting in April, assuming those meetings take place.
Any questions or comments regarding the joint advisories? If not, let's move into the financials.
Financials for February year-to-date for the POA first. And keep in mind, all of this is before the virus really started kicking in and impacting the POA. And I'm going to speak about our plan, our going-forward plan as a result of the virus. You'll see that revenue compared to budget is short by $97,000. Assessments are up a little bit, by $34,000. Golf is down, and some refunds as annual, the annual fee change with the 2020 Plan. Compared to prior year, the number is quite a bit larger. And if you recall, in February of last year, we had the cell tower lease sale, which was approximately $1.1 million. So that explains the majority of that delta, or that difference. Operating expenses are better than budget by $327,000. $98,000 of that is from salary and wages. $65,000 from maintenance and repairs. $33,000 from service, software support contracts. $20,000 from equipment and tools. And $28,000 from professional services related to the stunt-up. So the EBITDA compared to the budget were better than budget by $230,000. But compared to prior year, we're down quite a bit as a result of the $1.1 million from the cell tower sale. Moving on to the Water Utility. You'll see compared to budget, we are better than budget by $149,000. That's mainly due to water usage. And we're better than prior year also on that revenue. On the expense line items, $45,000 worse than budget, where the software maintenance for $32,000 kicked in, but it was budgeted for later on this in the year. So that hurts a little bit in February, but it'll help us later on when it's actually budgeted. So they're better than even the budget by $94,000. So if it wasn't for the virus, I'd say we have a great start to the year. But things are definitely different as a result of the virus. Any questions regarding financials?
Mary, Tia, any questions?
No, the question is the statement that February wasn't so great. We all saw that February was how they were enjoying it, the new participation, and the enjoyment was there. And it's just, the March is going to be interesting.
Okay, we had several open forum comments last time. Are there any open forum questions to come in for tonight?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Go ahead.
All right, the first is from Sandy Fosdick, Stonehaven Drive. With the passing of the 2020 Plan, there were promises made to keep all lakes, recreation centers, pools, the gun range, and the beach for use of members and guests only, no public access. We were told the Board spent months creating the 2020 Plan for the assessment increase. One would have thought that all scenarios and revenue streams would have been considered before putting the plan out to membership. Yet at the last Recreation and last Lake Committee meetings, the committee members were looking for workarounds to the promised rule change. We have just paid the first increased assessment, and promises have been broken. Can you explain to the membership what the definition of a Recreation Guest is, and when the Board approved of its use, as I'm not seeing the definition in our policies? Furthermore, it is our intent to allow members to profit by instructing classes while sponsoring guests, i.e. a paddleboard instructor who is a member yet charging $140 for members and $150 for recreational guests. Should members be allowed to make $4,400 plus using POA amenities? In my opinion, if we are keeping with the promises made under the 2020 Plan and we don't have, say, 10 members who want to sign up for a paddleboard course, then there certainly is not much demand for one, and we should not compromise our morals with the workaround. The same applies to all activities on the lakes. While a member may be hurt because they can't take a class if it's not offered, I have to wonder how many more members may be hurt because they can't use the beach while it's being used for this class. Currently, our golf courses are underutilized, so we allow the public to play. That's not the case with other amenities. I've heard many members state they could not get to use the beach. Hopefully, with making it a private amenity, members will be able to access the beach. Also, the lakes at times are very busy. Many voted yes to the 2020 Plan solely due to private amenities. Only one board member stood up and corrected the committee members at the Recreation and Lake Committee meetings. Two board members sat there and said nothing. I'm hoping we hear this, I'm hoping we hear at this board meeting, this has been corrected. Promises should be promises kept, not broken. Thank you for listening. The second is from Joy Sawyer, Dillow Drive. As I was watching the most recent video of the Bellevue City Council meeting, I noticed that Mayor Christie stated that the POA would be paying for the maintenance of the part of the connector trail that is to go through Blowing Springs. The 2020 Plan clearly states that there will be no new trail maintenance for three years. Please explain how, then, the POA will be paying for maintenance for a portion of the connector. I'm not talking about mowing the property around the connector. I'm specifically talking about the concrete path itself. Should the path require maintenance in the next three years, how will it be maintained if not by the POA, as Mayor Christie has stated? As I watched the most recent Lakes Committee meeting, I was very concerned about the language being used related to guests in the 2020 Plan. One committee member asked if Mr. McCash had weighed in on how the plan could be interpreted. I would like for the Board to explain how we can already be talking about working around, interpreting the language, defining guest and recreational guest. You haven't even collected everyone's first month's inquiries, and already you are looking for a loophole. Please define for the members tonight what is the difference, what the difference is between a guest, a recreational guest, and a POA-sponsored guest. Are there limits to the number of guests a member may have at any given time? You stated maybe 10, but probably not 75. That is a very big difference. The 2020 Plan states that lakes will be private for members and their guests only. It seems to me that these details should have been determined before you unethically begin calling unimproved lot owners and asking them to vote for an increase for the improved lot owners. Additionally, I would like to thank Mr. Hofer for standing up for members in recent committee meetings. I noticed that Mr. Brandonberg had nothing to say in support of members throughout the discussions. Joy Thomas Sawyer.
That was really on to the end. Go ahead.
So I'd like to respond for a couple of those things. On the first one, with regards to the reference to a statement made by the mayor, I can't speak to what the mayor said, but I can say this is in today's Board packet. There is an agreement that is for consideration for the Board to sign, which would state that any area along the Blowing Springs Connector that was previously maintained by the city or the POA will continue to be maintained. Anything new will be taken care of financially by the Trailblazers. And that's in the agreement. If there is a catastrophic event, a tornado or earthquake, a tree falls on the connector for that three-year period, they will take care of that. So there will be no additional dollars expended. That's, of course, assuming that the Board approves the agreement that is in the Board packet for today. With regards to the Lakes Committee, there was a lot of discussion. And I think it's important to say that, I'm going to compare it to when the Senate or the government passes a new law. After it gets passed, then there is a lot of interpretation to that law. In the POA's website, on the Q&amp;A section, and it was written and posted in September, it talks specifically about that for the gun range, it is for member use. But it also includes in that Q&amp;A that it says, for example, if there is a charitable event like the Cancer Challenge, that that would be allowed. And so that was stipulated all the way back in September. I know it was back in September, because I personally wrote that. Ultimately, it's going to be an issue that's going to have to go in front of the Rules and Regulations Committee, and then also potentially to the Board. I do not view this as the Board trying to shirk their commitment or the Committee's trying to get a workaround. I think it's an interpretation of a rule. I think it's a very valid question in the meeting, at the Lakes Committee meeting. I said, 10 sounds like a reasonable number of people that you can sponsor, but 75 does not sound reasonable. Where's, where do we fall in between them? That's a large gap. So I think we just need to allow for the Rules and Regulations Committee and the Board to work through this and to interpret this. There was varying opinions that were shared. And I think that after the Board goes through this, that they will resolve this issue.
Thank you. Okay, update on technical closures.
Okay.
The Lake Rowan, Tom.
Yes, Tia.
Sandy asked about the reference to participation guests, and that is something that we suggest. Can you explain what happened with that statement and why it's confusing with participation guests and sponsored guests, the differences are?
I think she means recreation guests.
Recreation guests, sorry.
Yeah, that was, and that was an issue that came up at one of the meetings. And I think there was, I think that was a mis, you know, it was just a poor use of words. Marketing was trying to get an update out, and it was a poor use of words. The Recreation Committee is going through and use, trying to update the language regarding guests and trying to use clear, much clearer language, like, you know, members' guests and members' sponsored guests and POA guests and so forth. So I think that once that policy gets updated, it'd be much easier, and then we can train everybody to make sure that they use the same language. And I think it was just an unintended error.
Can you further, Tia?
Yes, can you?
Okay, so to give the Board an update on everything that is occurring regarding the COVID-19. So we're staying as current as possible. A new directive was issued by the Secretary of Health for Arkansas today. And as a result of this, we're trying to make, we're making media changes. Currently, where we're at right now is all of our recreation facilities are closed. That includes fitness classes and the workout facilities. Right now, what we're doing is Joan and her team are doing regular classes that we're streaming on Facebook, and most of them have over 1,000 views. So I'm really pleased with how they're doing it. They're trying to mix it up. They even did a costume event yesterday where it was 80's Day, so it was kind of fun. So they're trying to keep our community active while they're all boarded up in their house. The, both of the restaurants remain open for pickup and delivery only. We're averaging between 30 and 40% of what we normally do. That's actually a lot better than I thought we would be doing. They're really hustling, so trying to make the most of it. And I really have to thank all of our property owners that are doing the delivery and pickup. They're supporting the restaurants. And what I really like is, I've been told multiple times that everybody's being very generous with their tips, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of our really valuable servers. Member Services, so Member Services remains operational, but the doors are closed. And we're doing a lot online and with calls. I got to compliment our IT department. Over the years, they've been pushing a lot of stuff where you can do almost everything online. Well, it paid off with this crisis, because you can do just about everything online. Or if you can't do it, you can call in. They are averaging 240 calls a day. They're way over. So I do ask our members patience. If they're not able to get through right away, you will get a call back. The team is working very long hours, trying to keep up with all the demand. Golf, golf's going to have to convert because of the recent new directive from the Secretary of Health. And starting Saturday, we're going to have one person per cart. We're going to implement it as much as possible for tomorrow. But the order, the directive just came out, and we have a full T-shirt. So we're going to phase it in as much as possible. Once we found out, we started blocking tee times in the morning on Friday. So we're going to try and phase it in tomorrow, and then Saturday, we'll have it 100% implemented. We're encouraging property owners to bring in their own carts. And if they are so inclined, we're encouraging people to walk, because the last several days at the country club, we've run out of carts at 12:30. So if you cut that number of carts in half because we're having to do it one-on-one, we're going to run out of carts very quickly. We're also, starting Saturday, we're going to convert to 12-minute tee times. That should allow us to use less carts. And then the last thing we're going to do is, people will not be able to get their cart. They'll have to wait until 20 minutes before their tee time, because we don't need them to get their cart an hour ahead of time, and the cart's sitting there idly where it could be on the golf course. So we're trying to be as efficient as possible. One of the ideas that came up, a property owner suggested that we limit the number of golf courses that we have open. Unfortunately, that won't work, because our cart barns are only so large, and we can only charge so many carts per golf course. Earlier today, at a senior staff meeting, we started discussing and preparing for the possibility of a shelter-in-place directive. We don't know if that's going to come, but we want to at least be prepared and think through the process so that if it does come our way, that we're not caught off guard, that we've already thought it through. So I was really pleased that the team was thinking creatively and going through that. The Water Department, what they've done, now that's an essential service. What they've done is they've set up into several teams, several autonomous, separate teams. So if we had to quarantine one entire team, we still keep the water flowing, because we have separate teams. And we're keeping the teams away from each other. And we have actually located the teams in different buildings. They use different buildings, different vehicles, and different equipment. So one team, if we were to have to quarantine one, we could still remain operational, because water absolutely is an essential service. We're also doing, looking at doing that in other departments where it makes sense. Initial steps for our residents, 10 days ago, we made the following determinations: that all lake fees would be waived for at least 30 days. It may get extended, but it's, we're on a day-to-day basis at this point. All boat registrations, the deadline for registering your boat has been extended by 30 days. And water shut-offs for delinquent accounts will be suspended for at least 30 days. We recognize that some of our property owners may be in tough times because of the crisis. With regards to the plan, the going-forward plan, revenue is a moving target, because it's constantly changing. We were actually fairly busy at our golf courses, and we were thinking that that revenue was doing pretty well, but that changed today. So we're trying to prepare revenue targets, but the target is moving. You know, the rules and regulations, the rules that we are living under are changing, and we don't know the end date. We don't know it's going to be over, so it's really hard. With that being said, the team pulled together, and we have developed a plan where we'll be able to carve $370,000 out of our budget for the 2020 Plan, for the 2020 budget, if we need that much. It's quite possible we will need all of that. But keep in mind, anytime you do those kind of, that level of cuts, you're going to notice it. You know, we're cutting out some capital projects, we're cutting out repairs and so forth. You end up noticing that. Unfortunately, as a result of having to close the Recreation Department and at least partially close F and B, we had to lay off 60 of our very hard-working employees. We hope that this crisis passes and that we'll be able to get them rehired in the near term. Very proud of the team. We have been implementing changes on a regular basis, and they've been reacting very quickly to a very changing environment. We found out about the directive today from the Secretary of Health, and we had a plan developed and implemented within an hour on what we would do for golf. So we're really trying as best as we can to react to this changing environment. And once again, I encourage all our residents to use our restaurants. Come do the, you order in advance, you come, take it up, they'll bring it out to your car on the curb. And please take care of our servers, because they're very hardworking.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the management. Go ahead.
Yes, Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, I just want to clarify something. There are some people saying that all of the amenities are closed. Well, obviously, you just talked about several of them that are closed. And it was late and hard, the beach was kind of open it. Well, just another, maybe not. At any rate, all the amenities are not closed. Those that can maintain some kind of service with their insurance and all are obviously doing that. Joan's going after the job with her video classes from Recreation. So just wanted to make that point.
Absolutely. And the trails are still open. You know, that was in the directive that came out from the Secretary of Health today, that the trails are still open. They're just encouraging people to not congregate in groups of 10 or more. You'll notice in today's meeting, everybody in this room, we counted it up, and we made sure that there was no more than 10 people. There's actually only nine people here, I think, if I'm correct. And we just wanted to make sure that we hit that number, and we tried to maintain as much distance as possible. And that's on the trails too, and everywhere else. We're trying to, but Mary is 100%. We're trying to keep the, as many amenities are open, but also be cognizant of our members' gap in health.
Great. I also want to thank management, because the decisions in the last two weeks have been almost hour to hour, and it can turn completely around. You think you have it figured out, and an hour later, you can't do what you just said you were going to do. So they've done an excellent job in pulling through and making changes for us so we can have as many activities as possible. So, any other comments?
Well, could a lot of the down, they're coming out with $330,000 worth of potential savings from off the budget?
Yeah. And I don't, I think I phrased that wrong when I said potential. What I mean is, if we need to, we can cut $370,000 out of the budget. If that is not needed, because our revenue has not hit as much, and it depends upon when we reopen, then we could reduce that amount. So I don't want to say potential as in, well, you know, potential of 370, but it will turn into 200. That's not what I meant, is we have the potential to ramp it all the way up to 370 if it's required. But keep in mind that those savings will not necessarily take place in these months. It's over the entire year.
Mary? Okay. Okay, moving along, you will see numbers 10 through 22, or 21, are different reviews of motions, etc. So we're going to handle that just a little bit differently tonight. I'm going to read the motion. I'm going to state very briefly what it is, ask for a second, and then ask for any discussion, and move as long as, best we can. So I think that'll save us considerable time and concerns. The first one is a Lake Committee nomination. The Lakes Committee announced they nominated Paul Bigford and Grace Turley for another three-year term. And because they nominated, they come to the Board, and the Board... And because they nominated, they come to the board, and the board gives final approval for both. But they're separate motions. So the first motion would be, I approve the recommended nomination for Lake Joint Advisory Committee and Paul Vicford for another three-year term. Do we have a second? Okay, David? Any discussion on that one? All those in favor? I have two votes. Mary?
Yeah.
Tia?
Yeah.
Okay. The second motion is, I approve the recommendation, nomination of Lake Joint Advisory Committee of Grace Turley for another three-year term. Do I have a second on that? Jerry? Second on that? Any discussion on that one? If not, a vote on that one for all those in favor. I have two votes. Mary?
Yeah.
Tia?
Yeah.
Thank you. The next item is a continuation of the handicap flag program brought up by the Golf Committee in their March meeting. The Golf Committee recommended a continuation of the handicap flag program indefinitely, and it was very well received by the people using it, handicap as well as age-related. And they've made provisions for both, and everybody seems to think that's a good program and it's worked very well for us and it allowed golfers to maintain their golf, whereas they may have to quit otherwise. So the motion is to approve the recommended nomination of the Joint Advisory Golf Committee to continue the handicap flag program indefinitely. A second?
Second.
David Watson? Any discussion? And we will continue both parts, age as well as handicap by the state. Okay, those wishing to support and vote on that at this time? I have two. Tia?
I have a second.
Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a maintenance agreement with the Medfield Trail, referred to as the Blowing Spring Connector and the Greenway. The revision here was done as requested of the board members. They asked for a couple of changes. Those changes were made, and therefore, the motion is to approve proposed maintenance agreement for the Medfield Trail, also referred to as Blowing Spring Connector and the Greenway. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, David, thank you. Any discussion? They have identified the items that we asked to change, and we will make those changes. Okay. At this time, if you would vote, please, on the motion?
All votes.
All those in favor? Tia?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, there's one opposed. The next item is the wait vote, and that's number 13, wait vote proposal. This is the second reading. And it's consistent with the recommendation developed by the Lake Committee. The rules and the Regulations Committee developed the below regulations. These regulations approved will incorporate into the voting regulations. Okay. The motion is, I made the motion to amend the voting regulation to incorporate the language developed by the Regulation of Wait Votes. This is the second reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, David? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Those wishing in a positive manner or a yes to the wait vote resolution? I have two. Mary?
No.
Tia?
Yeah.
Okay, I thank you on that one.
Got that one.
Policy 1.02 revised, the first reading. The Rules and Regulations Committee recommend the attached changes to the policy 1.02, establishing, changing, and rescinding governing documents. And the motion is to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee regulation change to the policy 1.02 as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required readings. A second? David?
Normally, this would go through the Rules and Regulations Committee, but that committee meeting had to be canceled. So to the best of the committee members' ability, we did it via email. So it was a little bit unusual. Normally, we would do all this work in a committee setting, but that was not possible because of the crisis situation at this time. Jerry did quite a bit of work, so I'd say he was the author of many of these changes, updates.
Appreciate that. Okay, any discussion? If not, I ask for a vote on the motion to recommend the changes to the policy 1.02 as noted in the attached document, the first of two readings. Positive vote? Tia?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be 14, Policy 1.305 revision, is the first reading. The Rules and Regulations Committee recommend the attached changes to policy 1.3.5, 1.1.03.5, Rules and Regulations Committee. The motion to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommended policy change of 1.03.5 is noted in the attached. This is the first of two readings. Can I have a second to this motion? David?
Rules and Regulations.
Go ahead, Mary.
If people are watching, you want this for help with the 1.03.5.
Can we get that?
1.03.5 is the Rules and Regulations Committee. So policy's having to do with the Rules and Regulations Committee.
Okay. And it's also stated that the committee will elect the chairperson by majority vote. In the event of a tie, the board chair shall decide the casting vote or cast the deciding vote, I think it says so.
No, it does not say that.
Shall cast the deciding vote.
You're right.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or discussion on that? If not, all those in favor of changing the motion, policy 1.03.5. Two here. Mary?
Yeah.
Tia?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Policy 1.04 revision. It's the first reading of two, and it's Rules and Regulations attached. And this is the removal of the Community Involvement Committee from the advisory positions. And so the motion is to recommend the change of policy 1.04 as noted in the attachment and being the first of two. Can I have a second on this? David?
Oh.
Okay, Mary, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? It's simply the removal of the community involvement, and that was decided pretty much by the committee themselves, that that was the best move in that situation. So, okay, can I have any discussion? If not, can I have?
Um, well, I'm sure, I don't know if it was during the meeting, but some of the things that that committee has done, and thanks all of the members over the three years that it was in existence. You know, I'm not going to go there again.
You just stole my thunder. Go ahead.
They, you know, this committee championed the Code Drive, which has proved to be very successful, and the Fireflies and Tailgates events. Also, years ago, when they were the Young Residents Committee, before they changed their name, they championed updating our playgrounds, and they championed the beach. So many thanks to the hard work from these committee members.
And they have been very successful. And both of the projects, the Code Drive as well as the Fireflies, will be carried on by staff members.
Correct.
Okay? Can I ask for a vote?
The reason it's been this bad is we couldn't get any members.
This is correct.
And I think that's why the committee thought it was time to resolve.
And some of the committee members from that committee have put in applications to transfer over to other committees.
Okay. And they were given first choice on that if they chose to?
We gave, yeah.
An opportunity to transfer if they chose to, so. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, can I ask for a positive vote on the motion to remove the Community Involvement Committee from the advisories? I have two. Tia?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item up is private carts, Policy 2.03 revision. It's the private cart. Registration will be at the Membership Services and also must have an active, activity cart is what I'm trying to say, and those seem to be the two changes. So the motion is to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes to policy 2.03 as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two required readings.
Okay.
Discussion or any second?
Second.
Jerry Baron, a second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. On requirement for registration 5.2, it says, "All owner activity or ID card for," as recommended by management. There are capacity agreements that might have been, or attempting to leave it, or as recommended by management. How do you feel about this?
So on page 115.
Jerry, that's not mine. Not mine.
115.
How about after the word "cart," we strike everything from there on because everybody's looking at each other going, where did this come from? Tia, would you like to make a motion to amend it right here? Approve as amended.
Yeah, I make a motion to amend and remove the words "for," as recommended by management.
I will second that.
Okay. Discussion on that? It will simply read, "Hold a current activity or void ID card." No discussion? Okay, let's call a vote for the amended?
Amendment.
Amended?
No, the amendment.
The amendment itself. Then I go back into the, okay. Let's call for a positive vote or a vote, all those saying yes on the amended?
Amendment.
Amendment to the policy. Good God, folks.
I knew this was going to have a problem before we got done with this.
You got to check it out.
Okay, Tia?
Yeah.
Don't laugh at me, it's not kind. Mary?
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Now, we will go to vote on the amendment itself or the motion itself, policy 2.03 as attached, as amended policy. All those in favor?
Who said we have?
Who's second? Did Jerry Baron second this? And discussion was held. All those in favor? One more time. Mary?
Yeah.
Tia?
Yeah.
Okay, that just shows how human I am tonight, so life is like that. Next one, boat registration and mooring lease agreement. Policy 2.04 revision, it's the first reading of two. The motion is to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommended changes to policy 2.04 as noted in the attached. This is the first reading. I think, as I looked through it, it was basically to move things in perspective with the Arkansas State Boat Regulations and pull them in line with everybody else. Is that fairly?
Yeah, I've been doing a lot of research on Arkansas State Boat Regulations, and so I used the exact wording of what the certificate is called. And then Jerry made the changes where we added activity card and a couple other things for clarification.
Okay. Can I have a second on that? Jerry Baron, thank you. Okay, discussion? If no discussion, I ask for a vote on the approval of Rules and Regulations Committee recommendation change to policy 2.04 as noted on the attached amendment. This is the first of two readings.
Mary?
Mary?
Yeah.
Tia?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is Policy 2.05 revision. It's the first reading of two. It's called common property hunting. And the motion is to approve Rules and Regulations Committee recommendation change to policy 2.05 as noted in the attached. And my understanding is that since we no longer have the arco land, that is no longer viable.
Correct. We can no longer allow?
People to vote, people to hunt on some of these lands that's not ours. Okay. Is that pretty well summed up? May I ask for a second?
Second.
Okay, David Watson? Any discussion on that? Okay, if not, all those supporting the recommendation to change policy 2.05, first of two readings. Tia?
Right, yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
Okay. The next policy is 3.08. And we're down to number 20, I think, pretty close to that. The Rules and Regulations recommend the following of temporary parking of vehicles. The motion is to approve the Rules and Regulations Committee recommendation change to policy 3.08 as noted on the attached. This is the first of two. My understanding is that the rules we're trying to change is it's okay to park overnight if you're involved in a fishing situation, that your boat, your need to be there overnight. Otherwise, it is not. Is that pretty well summed up?
Just cleaning up a couple of small things. It's not Membership Services, it's Member Services. Little things like that.
Okay. Can I have a second on that? Jerry Baron? If not, I ask for a vote on the Rules and Regulations Committee recommendation change to policy 3.08 as noted in the attached document, first of two readings. Two. Mary?
Yeah.
Tia? Tia?
Yeah.
Okay, and I have one more, which would be number 21. Bylaws Article 8, first reading. The Rules and Regulations Committee recommend the attached changes to the bylaws Article 8 committees. The motion is to approve Rules and Regulations Committee recommended change in bylaws Article 8 as noted in the attached document. This is the first of two readings. It removes community involvement from the advisory committee's status. And that's the only change I see. Can I ask for a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Okay. And that removes it from the bylaws as far as policy as well. Can I ask for a vote on policy?
Bylaws.
Bylaws, Articles 8, and noted in the attached document. First of two readings. All in favor? Tia?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand those were fast, furious through, some errors cleaned up on my part. We will be reading most of those again next month as the second reading on each of those. So, any comments at this time? Jerry?
I have a question on the super committee.
One second, Tia. One second, Tia. Jerry, hold on, go ahead. Jerry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, for next meeting, we'll probably have 20 of them.
20 more of them? Okay, thank you. I can hardly wait for that day. Tia, I hope yours doesn't end up to 30 or 40, but go ahead.
I have a couple of ones, but I probably agree with all of you, very springy. But in the super committee, we didn't, in our last meeting, we voted that we needed to just ban the community involvement and the super committee. If there's, I had enough sound, if it was somewhere, if we need to bring that?
It's an ad hoc committee, is that correct? It was an ad hoc committee, so therefore was not in the bylaws or the policy.
I see.
Okay. Okay, nothing further. The announcements, and these announcements are going to be tentative until we know more about what's going to happen in the next month. The general meeting is scheduled for April 9th. I'm lost, I don't know where there it is. April 9th at 4:30, that is a closed meeting. Coffee and questions for April 14th has been canceled, so there will be no coffee and questions at the country club. The work session is for April 16th at 9 o'clock. Watch for a change in that, that can be canceled at further notice. The Board of Directors' Record Session will be Thursday, April 23rd at 6 o'clock here in the boardroom, unless we're off of the 10 people, it will probably be done much the same as we're doing now.
All depends upon the directive from the governor and the Secretary of Health in the coming weeks.
And we are at the mercy of everybody else, whatever they tell us, we need to follow. So on behalf of everybody sitting here, I want to thank each and every one of you that are doing your part to make everybody safe. Please check on your elderly neighbors, check on people who you don't normally check on. It's the kind thing to do at this time if needed. So other than that, I appreciate, and we stand adjourned. So, other than that, I appreciate and we stand as gentlemen.